Second. First and second, it all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries six to zero. Open Meetings Act is posted on the door back there by the entrance. Roll call.
Yes.
Tim. Champs.
Yep.
Deb.
Yes.
Jim. Myself here. All accounted for. Uh, approve the agenda. Do you have any questions about the agenda? If not, uh, motion to approve the agenda is stated.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
I'll second that.
First and second, it all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries six to zero. Consent to adjourn that. We've been at some September twelfth board hearing. Do that first and then the regular meeting. Do you have any questions about the hearing? Changes? If not, we'll move on to the regular meeting. If there's nothing on that, then we have our special meetings that we had on twenty eighth. We have minutes, we're all here.
Yeah. September twenty eighth, back of your copy signed by Kelly.
Oh, the first two are the same. I wonder if they had to be here.
Are you missing this one board from last year?
Do we get a bonus if we find it?
It's a double pay.
Here, if there's no questions on that, we'll move on to the financial report.
Um, you can see that our Midwest, Midwest bank CDs, those are both flex CDs, which means we can withdraw once per calendar year without penalty. So we have flexibility with those CDs. Uh, board's been pretty committed to not tapping into those CD funds. We have a, a, a much higher rate available for those CDs if you want to consider it. They're a quarter percent and we're eligible for a rate as high as three and three quarters. But then they wouldn't be flex.
So Madison County Bank just adjusted theirs up too, right?
Yes.
Went to one four.
Yes. Um, so I, I've talked to Kevin. And obviously told him that I wanted to bring it to you tonight and see if he would want to pursue that.
Do we have to do it when it comes due or can we do it anytime?
Uh, those rates, he think, he, he feels those rates are going to be available for quite some time. So, uh, we didn't have that question. Do we have to let them, uh, mature? Uh, or can we essentially roll them over? Cash them out, reinvest them at a much higher rate? They just wouldn't be flexed. So there would be penalty for withdrawal. Which would, we, our, our other CDs are not flex either. So
Right.
It, it might be nice to maybe leave one of them as a flex. But move the other to a much higher interest rate.
We have the one at the hundred and fifty thousand. We did have to borrow it. We could just borrow against that and let the penalty stay on for us though.
I was wondering if you just do one to try and do the bigger one. Leave the hundred and fifty.
And then it's locked in for a year then if you change your mind?
You have different, uh, different time periods on those.
They can change it.
Yeah.
I think right now they're six months, right?
Six months?
It's three and a quarter. Um, that's three and a quarter. I said three and a half. So, anyway, I could pursue that conversation a little further, maybe have him even come to visit with us at our next meeting. But I suppose that'd be something to think about.
Yeah. To ask him what the penalty would be if we did.
Yeah.
Lock him in and have to take some out.
And we opened these in July of twenty ten and August of twenty eleven. So I, I asked a little bit of history. How long have we had these? So I mean, it gives you a little bit of an idea of when the district invested in those.
What year, twenty eleven?
Twenty ten and twenty eleven. The two fifty was twenty ten and the one fifty was twenty eleven.
Yeah, why don't we table that?
So I'll, yes, I'll have some more information for you or was it with you, Mr. Shousey? We'll see if we want Kevin to come address the whole board for some of the specifics of it.
We don't have it on as of action.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, there's no more questions there. We'll go into the plans.
Is that bus repair or something we were expecting?
Well, I was happy it only came in at six because the estimate was nine.
It was nine.
But it, it really wasn't something we were expecting. I saw going down the street, black smoke belching out of it. Bob knew already that there was an issue with it. So that's a, yeah, that's a, you know, an unexpected, pretty significant monthly expense.
Was it one of the older buses or one of the old?
Uh, it was, it was one of our roof buses. So I mean, uh, our, our older buses, we really don't, they pretty much just sit there. So we're using everything that we've got right now.
Any more questions on the dissent agenda? Not all in a motion to approve it as stated. Is there a second?
Second.
First and second, it all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries six to zero. Let me raise JPP presentation. There's some big students.
What? Um, I'm Christina Richter and I'm part of JPP, the Junior Pirate Posse.
Yeah, and I'm Melissa Jackett and I'm another one of the members of the Junior Pirate Posse. Um, JPP is our parent teacher organization for the elementary school. Our goals with JPP, we're trying to bring our parents and our community together with our students and staff to create more opportunities to make memories with our students. Uh, we want to be another support system for our teachers and staff. If they need something, we want them to be able to ask us, hey, can you guys come in and do this for me? We want to be able to be there for them. Um, right now, our main project is to raise funds for new playground equipment. I don't know if you've been out there lately, but some of our equipment is getting a little bit older and is needing some updating. So, um, we have set our aggressive goal to raise a hundred thousand dollars to purchase our equipment. Uh, we've done plenty of fundraising events and we try to keep them ones that are available to all of our students to take part in. Um, we know that with some students, being able to go out and sell or do some other kind of fundraising is hard. So we try to pick things that includes everyone within the building. Um, we are also trying to raise money to do the surfacing for under the equipment. I know, um, the school board is helping us with the playground equipment. So we are very thankful for that. Some of the activities that we've done, um, around, since we started last year was family movie nights, father daughter dance, mother son bingo. Um, we did treats for Dr. Seuss Day, uh, baking buddies, cookie sales. We just started that this month and before the high school students even got dismissed Friday, we were sold out because all of our elementary kids wanted to buy cookies. So, um, and then we also do teacher appreciation stuff. Um, some of the fundraising we did last year, we had the apple your yard. So, um, they went around and you paid to have the apples move from yard to yard. Uh, we've done candy canes in the school where we sent kids home with treats and a candy cane and they brought back their change after Christmas break. Uh, we have our playground T-shirts that we did. Um, the jump ropeathon, the funds this year went towards the playground equipment. Uh, we had our soup supper and tavern night during, um, dance breaks, dancing at here at the school and then our baking buddy cookie sales, our big hit. Did you guys have any questions for us?
Have you gotten an estimate yet on what you want to do and what it's going to cost?
Um, no, not quite. There's, there's a lot that goes into equipment. Have you ever looked at like a catalog for equipment? It is so pricey.
Room equipment.
Pretty much.
But last winter-ish around then, we kind of shopped through different catalogs and kind of tagged the things that caught our attention and things that we liked. So this fall into Christmas season or into the winter, we will definitely pinpoint exactly what we would like to have. Uh, we also reached out to a couple of different outfits last year about the surface. And so when I talked to one sales rep, he had said that it is very expensive, almost as expensive as the equipment itself. But there are grants out there where you can get reimbursed so much if you go through and do the rubberized surface. So that's why we're pushing forward in hopes of making that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks a lot.
Yes.
Sure, the teachers appreciate it.
Thanks too.
One of my partisan pieces at a time, I can send it up to my yard. Need to put it together. Let the grandkids do that. Thank you very much. Okay, now our number nine, public comment. Do we have anyone wishing to speak tonight? Okay, I'll read this one. We're now at the portion of our agenda set aside for public comment. Each person wishing to address the board will be recognized by the board president. I must say and state your name. Each person wishing to address the board will have five minutes and only one opportunity to do so. Please remember at this meeting, the Pliny Public School Board of Education is held in public and comments or conduct that are lewd, obscene, profane, slanderous, threatening, or hostile will not be tolerated. You would be further advised that there's no legal protection for any comments that are made. Public comment is an opportunity for patrons to express their concern or support for school business. Public comment is not an opportunity for open dialogue with the board while in open session and board members will not respond to questions or comments. Patrons are encouraged to follow board policy if they have a concern about personnel or school operation. All right, I would like to speak. Go ahead. Do you want to please stand and state your name?
Okay, uh, a couple of different questions. You guys can dress them however you want. Which contract are you on with?
State your name.
Kyle Todd.
Okay.
Which contract that's on the internet is Darren under right now? The twenty one, twenty three or the twenty two, twenty four? You got two contracts on the internet.
It's the latest one.
It is the twenty four.
Yeah, two year contract.
Okay. Um, your transparency thing that is required by state Nebraska doesn't match either of your contracts for wages for the superintendent. They don't follow either contract. And that's, that's required per state law. You've got to have the transparency to have those figures to match contracts for every superintendent. And you was at the tax hearing that night, Mike, you and Tim. And I brought up that night. I, I don't understand how the board says Darren's not on your insurance. So you're giving him nineteen thousand, whatever, eight hundred and seventy four dollars. But yet he's on your insurance through his wife. So all expenses that he occurs, you guys' insurance will pay him for in the first place. So does that mean that the husband and wife teachers in the school, they're getting paid nineteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy four if only one of them take the insurance and they're both on it? That's only being fair to everybody in the school. You've got what, three or four married couples? And Darren is the only one that's getting paid nineteen thousand? Can you answer why that is, you know, a expense that I think you could cut out real easily?
He's not the only one getting paid. He's the only one getting paid that much. But he's not the only one that's drawing an extra wage by not taking that insurance.
Why you, you're still paying for their medical insurance. So why would you give them? I mean, I could see if they wasn't on your policy. Yeah, then they deserve some refund. But were they still costing you the same premium? That's double paying them. And, um, that night at the tax meeting, you know, everybody was on Darren that night. And the more and more I thought about it after that meeting, yeah, Darren's doing the spending. But you six up there have the final say. You never say no. When he comes to you, he's just, you just keep, yeah, okay, yep. And so the spending is coming down to you six. And as long as you don't cut it, he ain't going to cut it. And that's what you guys are there for, is to look out for the spending.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
I have a question.
Please stand and state your name.
Kristi Halleck. We were talking about the playground equipment, right? And the fundraisers that you guys had last year. How much did you guys raise?
About twenty five thousand.
Okay, so we have about what? Well, I guess it depends on equipment that you actually are going to purchase, correct? So, um, the grants that you were talking about, do you have anybody writing those grants? Or what are you, where are you looking at to get this grant money?
Um, there are two different, um, resources that I looked into last year.
Okay.
Um, I think the first one was a Peter Kewitt.
Okay.
But that was a grant that you had to have a large amount of money to kind of match.
To not, right.
Yep, to match funds. We did not have that last year, so I didn't pursue it. But I will look into it this year. And then when I reached out to one of the playground sales person last year, um, he had mentioned to me that there are grants through the company that we could apply for if we were able to go with the rubberized.
Correct. So what about like state funding? I mean, don't we, was that not budgeted in? I mean, with like every year, is that not budgeted in? Like, oh, we need playground equipment. Can we budget that into the school board or the school budget?
We did.
Oh, we did?
Yes.
So?
So if you look at right now, we have a hundred twenty five thousand dollars to spend on everything. That includes our equipment and the surface.
Okay.
So we could look at it as we could spend all that on the equipment and lessen the surface amount. Or we could up our game a little bit and try to pursue more for the rubberized surface.
Gotcha.
Which is ultimately what we want. We want the best. I think that's why we're working so hard for this, is to get the best and go from there.
So essentially the, the rubberized.
This isn't on.
The agenda.
The agenda.
I didn't have me. I thought I could ask any question. I'm sorry.
No, it's, it's comment.
I'm using your time.
Just a little explanation, Kristi. It's comment. It's not back and forth dialogue. Sorry, yeah, that, that can continue that conversation after the meeting if you want to.
You're welcome to contact.
Yep, that's fine.
It's not on the agenda, so we can't talk about it.
We're breaking open meetings after, sorry.
Sorry about that. I just, I was curious. No, I think it makes sense to ask that question.
Sorry.
Sorry, guys.
That's all right.
Okay.
Didn't mean to disrupt.
It's all right.
Anybody else wish to speak?
God dang it.
Okay. Discussion items, JPH and budget trends.
Okay, so, um, I shared, you know, some more data with you, um, sort of going back several years and, uh, went back through every, uh, financial report from every board meeting going back to twenty sixteen. So maybe just a, a, a clearer picture, um, than what we had at the, at the budget hearing on the twelfth. Um, probably some good, some good data to have, mainly to see some trend lines and why it was necessary to have, um, to have a higher tax asking this year to maintain our, our funding for, essentially for our personnel. So, um, so I wanted you to have that. So you're maybe in a better position to respond to any stakeholders that might ask you questions about, um, why did we need to have an increase in, in tax asking? Uh, we haven't had one for several years. I guess that's part of the answer. Um, and uh, again, in hindsight, you know, we're maybe a year late on trying to keep up with, with personnel expenses. Um, the joint public hearing, um, that was held at the, at city library, um, you know, I don't know exactly what the intent of the unit camera was for the joint public hearing, whether it was to provide, uh, you know, satisfaction to stakeholders or, you know, more, I think they talk about more transparency and such. Uh, but to bring several political subdivisions together for that, uh, you know, I don't, I don't know how they're going to change it, but I, I guarantee you they will because I, I don't think either, you know, I don't think anybody that attended it probably thought it was an incredibly worthy experience. Whether it was the, the stakeholders that came, uh, and many of them, you know, questioned and from what I hear from other superintendents and, and other folks from around the state, there's some misunderstandings about really what would be, what was going to happen there? Whether there were going to be votes that were taken there, whether it was the place to, uh, to express dissatisfaction maybe with your valuation increases. I think many joint public hearings had those comments, as did ours. Um, you know, and then for the, the individuals that, that were present for the political subdivisions. I just don't know how worthy of an exercise it was. Uh, the unit camera will change something with regard to it, almost certainly the timeline. Uh, because they left, they did move our date when the budget was due, but they allowed for joint public hearings up until two days prior to that. And so it really, uh, I, I'm not aware of any school board, uh, around the state. There were dozens of schools that were subject to LB six forty four and the JPH. Uh, I'm not aware of any that after testimony at the JPH made any changes to their budget. And again, whether that was the intent of the unit camera, I don't know. So I'll follow that very closely, uh, this next year, um, as all school districts will, to see, uh, how they try to, to fix that, uh, to maybe have it accomplish what, what they originally intended. So it, it, it really was, was not, uh, a great thing for public schools and I don't think it was a great thing for our stakeholders, you know, that came to express their concern with valuation increases and tax increases. And that'll be the testimony I'm sure that the, the unit camera will get from both sides. As they, as they head into, to try to, to tweak it and, and make it work, you know, the, the way they intended. So, um, do you have any questions about any of your budget data or your extra budget data that I provided?
Do you have any extra of these copies that the public could look at?
Like the paper? Have you submitted that to Brooke?
Yeah, this would be nice to have.
Because all that one sided crap he always puts in, it'd be nice if he saw the truth.
One thing that made us put you on the spot, you know, the numbers, we sent out numbers on special ed students.
Yeah.
And what that costs. I don't think we can, I mean, I'm talking about individual students, but could we, a little bit with that? What we spent on special ed students?
Yeah, uh, school districts are required to provide special services for anybody living in their district birth to twenty one. So birth to twenty one, a school district has to provide services for students with special needs. Uh, we currently have six students who are not school age, birth to five, that we provide services for. And we have eight, we have eight students that are considered, uh, level three students. So we have, uh, about fifteen percent of our population are special needs students. They have some type of verified special need. Eight of those students are considered level three. So their IEP placement is, is a alternative placement. And so there we run into, uh, significant expenses with regard to services. So, and that's all the way to, to age twenty one. So we have, uh, three students that are currently over eighteen, they're between eighteen and twenty one that we provide services for until they're age twenty one. So, um, I don't, I don't know the data about other schools and what their special ed expenses are, but they could vary greatly. I mean, some are higher, some are lower. Um, but, um, that, you know, is, is a, is a factor which can affect your budget quite significantly. As you know, uh, two years ago, we had a student move in and within a week, we had to purchase a wheelchair accessible van. You know, we had, we had no choice and we didn't really have it, that specific item budgeted for. We didn't anticipate that. That's why you, you generally add extra funds to your special ed budget in particular because you never know who might move in, uh, that has significant special needs. And so, um, that's not necessarily an isolated incident. That happens from time to time, happens to every school district. Might be, you know, every other year. It might not be for ten years, but it will happen. So we do receive federal reimbursement as, um, anywhere, somewhere close to fifty percent for our students, uh, that are of school age. We do receive one hundred percent reimbursement for all students birth to five. We do receive a hundred percent reimbursement for that. And then your, your reimbursement is for all your expenses to educate that child above your cost per pupil average. Okay, so.
Even the travel time?
Yes, yes, yes. You, all our travel expenses are reimbursable for special ed students and, and then obviously the tuition for the schools that they attend and the, and the services that they receive at those schools.
Are you able to share those costs on an annual?
Uh, the, the specific sped costs?
Just general, the total?
We're, we're well over a half million dollars is budgeted for special ed.
Yeah. A lot of people don't know that. A lot of people don't know that.
Yeah, that's obviously a very, uh, that's a sensitive issue. And of course, there are, um, FERPA laws with regard to privacy for, for educational, uh, educational rights and such. But especially particularly when you get into rule fifty one and students with special needs, it's even a, a, a very, a very strict standard for, um, but the budget is, is certainly public knowledge, but.
Didn't, I, I believe you said at another time anyway, that any grant money also figures into our cost per pupil too?
Yeah, yeah. For, for folks that are, are, are really focused on the cost per pupil expense and, and that's, that's fine. There, there's a, um, hundreds of data points about every school district with regard to their budget. Um, cost per pupil is one that, that folks like to compare us with somebody else here and there and so on. And they're certainly entitled to do that, but it, it certainly also doesn't tell the full picture, um, because we don't know what services they may be, you know, they may be providing, among other things. Uh, the level of education of their staff is, is a big thing. Do they have many, many, many teachers with master's degrees or many teachers who have tremendous amount of experience? And so we've got several teachers who, who are well over a hundred thousand dollars in total district expense when you take salary, benefits, uh, and pers FICA. And, you know, some districts maybe just, you know, might not have that same expense of a teacher. So we've got somebody teaching art and, uh, they not, may not be a very expensive teacher. And another school might have a teacher teaching art, same one point O, but they could be, uh, experienced with a master's degree. And so their art expense, their art expense for personnel could be a lot higher. Um, our S R funds is, you know, federal, beware, beware of, uh, of gifts from the federal government.
Right.
Now, I'm not suggesting we shouldn't have accepted the eight hundred thousand dollars in S R funds, but that will come back to affect our budget in coming years. Federal expenditures, uh, prior to a year or two ago, I don't know the exact year, we don't spend a whole lot of federal dollars. We don't receive and therefore spend a whole lot of federal dollars. So it never had my attention, uh, that they, that the state, uh, started to add your federal spending into your cost per pupil, uh, figure. That it, it, it used to not be included. It now is. And so we've got an eight hundred thousand dollar expenditure. These were funds that we had. These are not, not our local tax dollars that we levied to spend. These were federal funds, uh, stimulus funds, right? And so we, we have and still are investing those in our students and in our facilities. Uh, those eight hundred thousand dollars in. Those $800,000 in expenditures will go towards our cost per pupils, which will go up, and then your federal reimbursement for sped services will, will receive a smaller portion, because our cost per pupil's gonna go up, and the gap between your cost per pupil and your actual expenditure is what you get the reimbursement on. So that gap is gonna be smaller for a couple of years, until this $800,000 in ESR fund expenditures comes off our AFR.
Isn't some of that already factored in, the first funds that we got, it's been a couple of years?
Yeah, and that was just a small amount, 67,400. We've since spent, in this past fiscal year, you know, well over a half a million.
One thing that'd be interesting too, is on this cost per student, is how many average students per teacher do you have? I mean, if you've got 20 kids in a class, or do you have six kids in a class, and say the teachers, I mean, that, that can just show everything that's left.
Sure, larger schools gonna have, you know, more efficiency of their facilities and their resources than what we will at a smaller school, that's, you know, it's just cost and effect. I guess just one comment I had about that joint public hearing, and I, I know I wasn't there anyway, but every question that was asked of me anyway since that, and even before that, anyway, is very valid, anyway, appropriate. But the problem was, it was, it was two weeks too late. The appropriate time to ask those questions was at our budget hearing on September 12th, we had an open Q and A session for anybody that walked in the door. And only one, one person took advantage of it, two people took advantage of it. You know, there was, you like I said, there was some miscommunication with that joint public hearing was there for, if you ask me, and I guess, I don't know if we could better advertise anyway that, the budget hearing better, but like you said, they, they want open dialogue, they want questions and answered to be asked and answered anyway, that's the appropriate time, it was on the agenda for a Q and A session on September 12th, we had two people show up.
People just get relaxed with it until they hit their pink whoops card.
I'm sure.
If they would've gotten that card ahead of time, they'd have been here, but you didn't know whether they're gonna need that card or not until the budget hearing.
That's probably true too, so.
Yeah, the timing needs to be adjusted for the whole process.
Yeah.
So with all this data, is it safe to say that our total cash assets in our general fund, like the, like our actual money, has just been in a steady decline for the last five years?
Yeah, did that what it shows?
Yeah, so I'm just, why is that, why are we losing money?
Because we haven't, we're not losing money, we just haven't been asking the taxpayers for more money every year, we've closed the gap on cash on hand essentially.
Payrolls, payrolls going the other way, basically we're squeezing the term plus the time that we can squeeze it, all the excess funds we've been using instead of carrying them over. And that's another thing, you can look back on this, if we went, went up 2.25% for five years in a row, we'd be right where we're at right now. Instead, we held it steady for five years, and now we're jumping, a big jump, only one year. So half the people that are out there say, well, thanks for holding as long as you did, another half percent, I wish you'd go up steady, so we could just, you know, adjust regularly, but.
Sure.
But you get both sides. And we tried to hold it as long as we could, and it went up. If we'd have gone up 2 and 1/4% every year, I probably wouldn't have been much sad about it, you know. Okay, there's nothing more, we'll go to number 11, review board policies, 612.00, 612.01, and 612.02. These are all directed to you, what?
So these do further explain a, a little bit, and quite briefly, are some of our responsibilities to special education. So, 612.00 is not so much policy as it is a statement, and then 01 and 02 essentially states that we will follow the law with regard to special education, providing a free, appropriate public education to all children, and, you know, students with special needs, it's the IEP team that determines what is appropriate for that child. And again, for most students, services are, are, are provided, you know, onsite, within the classroom, within the mainstream classroom, at their general education peers, which is the case for most schools, quite honestly. So, these are both statute-based certainly, and, you know, language that we depend upon our special education teachers and our special education director to, to manage for the district.
So there's no requested changes to?
Nope, nope, the language is all up to date and appropriate.
I'm sorry, why, how's it wrong? All right, board development, pages 11, 130 to 153. Thank goodness we haven't had to deal with this in my time, in here, but. Talks about, basically open, public comment time and things getting done really, and how you handle it and stuff, but we've had a, a good group of people, and they do have something that we talk about, where they've been pretty well, you know, good about how they make their comments and everything, so haven't ever had this problem, so. There's a lot there to think about, and be a lot to remember if something like that happened, and you have to know how to handle it, without looking it up.
Yeah, oftentimes, I've, I've unfortunately been part of circumstances where there, there was a significant issue, a school board generally, in my experience, would have the school board's legal counsel present, you know, for meetings when there are personnel issues that might rise to a discussion of employment, just to make sure that you're, you're staying on the right side of the law.
But that's cheap.
Sure. Drive time.
Anything they have any other comments on that? They have no action items, so we'll go to reports, activity directors' report.
Postseason stuff starts here this coming week, volleyball team's starting conference here on Saturday, and then they're in the sub-districts, football has playoffs next week, cross-country has districts on Thursday, state next Friday, so all that stuff's kind of wrapping up here for the fall sports. Junior high sports is going to be switching over here in a couple of weeks, so we'll be going from volleyball and cross-country into basketball for girls, wrestling for boys, and moving forward there. And then I put in there a scorecard that's gonna be officially paid off in January, so I know we use funds from the school to finish paying for the tail end, until we got some more checks in, and so with the people re-upping their advertising and everything here in January, it'll officially all be paid for, and this year's huddle subscription and the software subscription will all be paid for by the scoreboards, so all that's within.
By, by people that have donated, don't.
Advertising.
That was some questions I had to, glad you clarified.
Yep, so that will be 100% funded and paid for by advertising dollars.
By the first of the year, basically?
By the first of the year.
January 1st, yeah, great.
Do you get any feedback from the donors on if they're happy with it, or not happy with it?
I haven't had anything bad, we've had more people adding actually, still working on trying to get a few more commercials, or different ones, you know, cause we see the same ones kind of going over and over again, so trying to get some new content there, and doing some of that stuff, but that's been pretty much it so far.
You have to get their permission every time you redo a commercial.
So normally they just send one in if they have one, I know we have a class that's working on one for business here in town, we haven't quite got there yet, I have another senior that's actually doing sports marketing, is what she's going into, we have her working on for a moment at school, um, having a dimensional thing that we, we could possibly add on there if you, some, some different stuff.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Principals' reports.
The only other thing I wanted to add on there was that our preschool family night date has been set for October 17th, so when you look at that, you'll notice that we have a lot of different activities happening in October for our elementary students.
Parent teachers' conferences went well, percentage of them?
Yeah, we had a lot of participation. I was gonna add too, our seniors on Fridays, I have eight, 15 of them officially placed and are going out every single Friday right now, and then eight of them that haven't been placed yet, but I have meetings set up or in order to get set up for about four more of them, so hopefully by the end of October, all of our seniors will be placed and they'll be out and working, so.
That's all day, every Friday, right?
All day, every Friday.
And at the end of the year last year, how do the employers feel about it? Were they excited about it?
I had good feedback, yep, lot smaller class, we have a lot, there's a lot of different places that we're sending in a few kids this year, so it's kind of interesting to see the different interactions that we've had, and we've actually had a few kids that have gone out and set it up on their own, so it was just, I had to go and sit in on the meeting and get paperwork signed, so that part was pretty cool too, where seniors are getting excited about their future and what they want to do, and taking it into their own hands, so that part was pretty cool.
Are they all staying local, or some of them out on the driveways?
Norfolk is the farthest we have, we do have one going to Nucor, and then we have another one going to MP Global, we have two kids doing criminal justice classes at Northeast Community College on Fridays, so that's gonna be the farthest, we have a teacher going to Wayne, another one going to Pierce, so, other than that, I believe everybody is here in town, so.
All right, thank you to President's report, just gonna report on the evaluations, you all have your evaluations in your folders, have them filled out by the next board meeting, and then after the meeting, we'll go into closed session and compile them, go and read through the policy, what number was that again, 6, 4, or something?
Uh, 60.
60.
Uh, 60 something.
Just look through the book till you find it.
Hang on, I'm just about there. No, it's not, it's, it's.
It's 4, is it?
It's 4 something.
Okay. I think it's.
30205?
30205.
Yeah, if you wanna look over that as you're filling it out, so you know, what's expected when we compile it?
Mr. Salzer, I was maybe gonna show that video.
Oh, that one you sent out to us?
Yeah, I just.
Oh, you sent it to me?
Let me see if that brings up the code.
They just like remind you.
We are faithfully humble, we do the job and do it well, but it's climbing the highest peak and boasting about our accomplishment, we're on to the next task at hand, working hard, doing what needs to be done, that's why I serve. We know that it isn't always easy, tough decisions to be made, it can be one of the most rewarding and challenging things you will ever be a part of, when you have nearly 40 hours for the week, then the work starts. That's why I serve. We are school board members, locally elected officials, who have a love and support for public education, for our districts, for our communities, and for Nebraska. Every day, we work to positively affect our country's future by helping our greatest assets to excel in their lives, that's why I serve.
That's why I serve.
We are grandmas and grandpas, moms and dads, we are the sons and daughters of a generation who taught us the value of hard work and the satisfaction of a job well done. We want to leave it better than when we received it. We're visionaries, always looking forward to providing our students with the best tools for their success. That's why I serve. We've learned that our voice is most powerful when we listen, our influence is strongest when we generate options, and our sense of personal satisfaction is greatest when our contributions promote excellence in our school system.
That's why I serve.
We know our role is to govern, not to make day-to-day decisions, our responsibility is to be informed, to ask questions, to be open-minded, and to use data to make decisions which are best for the district, we are there to do what's in the best interest of the students.
That's why I serve.
That's why I serve. In the end, we see the time spent as a school board member is negligible compared to the lifetime of success we help our children achieve. Someday the meetings will end, our time will be through, and someone else will sit in that chair, but no matter what, we will leave knowing that the hard work and doing what's right had an impact, that's why we serve.
That's why we serve.
So, yeah, I just want to thank you, because it's kind of a thankless job to serve on a school board, and oftentimes, particularly about budget season, we can get, we can become far removed from what happens in the classroom from 8 to 3:30 every day, okay, or in our extracurricular activities, which is part of the experience that we want our kids to have. So, I thought that was a, an excellent reminder for all school boards to try to regain focus during times where it can be more challenging on, on why you serve, so I depend upon your leadership and support, and I'm very, very grateful for it, so thank you. After a couple of years off, the AQuest, the classifications will be coming out pretty soon, actually they are out, they're embargoed, we'll be able to report that to you, not until the December meeting, they're embargoed until mid-November, so at the December meeting, the principals and myself will have some data for you with regard to the classification from the Department of Education, the State Education Conference, we have Mrs. Jensen and Mrs. We have Mrs. Jensen and Mrs. Dorr and myself are scheduled to attend that. There's still time to register for that. I would be happy to have you attend. It is tremendous professional growth for board members. So just let me know, just our final, we made a significant investment in our shop over a year ago. The final piece of equipment came today. So Mr. Juden, who is on his honeymoon right now, that is the gift from the school district, is that his final Grizzly joiner cabinet maker machine has arrived. So that's pretty good. Did I, I forwarded an email to you, I believe, from Byron, update on, rather than have him come, I mean, they're so close, but there are still things to do. And they have invoiced us for the entire cost, the remainder of the cost of the project. I have negotiated a delay in us paying for the cost of the project. I wasn't going to authorize paying it until everything is, you know, completely done anyway, which is a little ways away. But even if we need to wait another budget cycle, Facility Advocates is granting us an extension to pay the project in full so. So we have some flexibility to finish paying for that, which is, which is pretty good on their part. So that, and there's my vacation in sick balance as of October tenth. And that's all I have.
Do, do we have any rules against or breaching? Does it breach a contract if somebody, like a teacher or administrator is like teaching classes at like, say, a college or something?
Nope.
So they can do that if they want to?
Sure, they can have a second job. If you're not paying them enough.
Considered unlighted.
There's actually stuff right in their contract, so it says they can do that kind of stuff. So it doesn't mean I'm here with, they're working. Same way with the administration. Okay, does anybody have anything else? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you all, thanks for coming, people.